Can we wave?
Yeah.
Oh, never mind. Serious enough now.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the August 10th, 2015 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. Just a couple of quick announcements. One, council met in closed session earlier this evening, and council discussed two topics, and one, we discussed potential litigation implications for a pending item on council's agenda this evening. And then council also came to consensus on the business terms for the sale of lots one and 11. That was the two items discussed in closed session. Also, just a couple of quick announcements. If you happen to have a cellphone, if you wouldn't mind putting that on vibrate or silent, we'd appreciate it. And then, if you haven't been with us before, emergency exits are to your right, out the door, and then to the right, down the stairs, at the end of the hallway. So that being said, I would like to invite Pastor Karen Sadvery from St. John's United Methodist Church in Fruitland to deliver our city invocation this evening.
Let us pray. Creator God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this city we live in, and we thank you that we live in a land where we can participate in our government. Lord, we thank you for those who have agreed to serve as elected officials, and for all those who have come here tonight to be heard. As this meeting proceeds, Lord, guard all of our thoughts and our mouths that what we do is done for the betterment of this community. And, Lord, just in everything that's done, let the welfare of this city's residents, especially those most vulnerable residents, be at the very top of everyone's priority list. Just please grace this meeting, and let everyone conduct theirselves appropriately. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a couple of special guests with us this evening. Quick thank you to Pastor Sadvery as well. Couple of quick presentations this evening. We have, representing the Bay Area Center for Independent Living, we have Rose Carey with us this evening, and I'd like to invite Rose to come forward.
Let me introduce myself. My name is Patty Tingle. I'm the executive director. Rose cannot be with us tonight, but she sends her apologies, and thanks you so much for this invitation.
Well, we're glad you're here for her.
Absolutely, and thank you. For many of you, this may be the first time hearing about Bay Area Center for Independent Living, but it is not the first time that you've come to know our organization. We have actually been here since 1974. You may first have recognized us as Holly Center Foundation, later as Holly Community, and now as Bay Area Center for Independent Living. In 2013, we received funding from the federal government and the state of Maryland to establish a center for independent living here on the shore. And the reason we were selected is that 51% of our board and over 51% of our staff are people with disabilities, which constitutes what is needed to be consumer-controlled, consumer-directed, implying that people with disabilities manage our organization, oversee our services, and actually provide our services. But what services could we offer the community beyond that which Holly Center, Dove Point, Lower Shore Enterprises, and others offer? What we offer, I've outlined for you in a brief handout, but let me just briefly say a little bit about what they are. As a center for independent living, the government charges us to provide five core services to this area. Those five core services include information and assistance about disability-related services. What do you do when you have a disability? Where do you go? Who do you turn to? How do you file for social security disability? Are you aware that you can continue working while receiving social security disability? Many people believe that that's not possible, that benefits will be cut off, but in fact, that's not true. There's many disability myths and errors in the community that we can help dispel, and help people to become productive and involved citizens of this community. So through information and assistance, we can offer that. We provide independent living skills training for those who may have had a stroke and can no longer remember how to balance their checkbook, or do simple things like prepare a meal, or keep their home. We offer peer mentoring. People who may have had a stroke, who can mentor others who have had a stroke, people who have suddenly found themselves confined to a wheelchair, or having to learn how to navigate around their homes, or in their jobs with a disability. We offer services that include advocacy. And advocacy means two things. Advocacy means me standing here, speaking tonight, talking about our services to you, or advocacy for an individual who may be talking with a landlord and having a dispute, and helping to negotiate through those disputes, helping to protect their rights as they live in their homes, or in their communities. So there's many opportunities that we have, but those are just the core services. The one that they've added to our responsibility list, they added in July of 2014 through the Workforce Innovations and Opportunities Act, was transitioning. And transitioning has two roles. Transitioning for our community means transitioning young people as they exit high school, into college, or into the employment world, or the transitioning of people from nursing facilities back home, or to prevent that transition from home into the nursing facility. What could we do to help? There's many things. There's many opportunities that we offer, and we're excited to be in Salisbury, we're excited to be in Easton, we're excited to be in Elkton. We serve the nine counties of Maryland's eastern shore with these services, and over the last two years, we've not only doubled in our service capacity, we've tripled. So we're out in the communities, working diligently every day. One of the unique services that we offer is assistive technology. It's those little gadgets and devices that you use every day, that you don't think about, that help make life easier, like the iPad. The iPad that can translate from English into Spanish. The iPad that can help a person who's hearing impaired communicate with you. We help people to understand and learn sign language. We help people of all disabilities, all ages. We have family services. When your child's diagnosed with a disability, who do you turn to? We can help. When your mother has Alzheimer's, how do you find services? We can help. We don't discriminate for age, and we don't discriminate for disability. But what we want to talk about tonight, and what we're hoping to convince you of tonight, is that we not only help individuals and consumers in our communities, but we have available services for businesses, and for government agencies, and for private nonprofit agencies. We have certified trainers on staff who are knowledgeable in the field and laws of the Americans with Disabilities Act. They understand what the Title II code of that act means. How do you handle employment issues? How do you handle access issues? How do you know when your meetings are completely accessible to all populations? And those are questions that we can help with. We can also help businesses teach their employees how to work with the disabled population, so you don't end up in the newspaper, like one of our neighboring county's restaurant owners. We hope to make Salisbury an inclusive community. We hope to help Salisbury become a welcoming and inviting community as you embrace this exciting time of revitalization here. We'd like you to think about making your businesses and your housing units accessible. Let's welcome in people with disabilities. Let's bring their purchasing power here. Let's bring them in as homeowners. Let's have our community become the model for the eastern shore. And we believe that that's possible by working together, not only our office, our agency, but with all the disability service agencies in the community. And by working together, we know that we will not encounter some of the challenges that other communities face, because we will be the model. Thank you so much for listening. I welcome any questions.
Ms. Tingle, can you, would you mind sharing, for anybody who's viewing at home, who may be interested in services you provide, your website, domain, and phone number, where you can be reached?
Absolutely. We're located in the building behind Holly Center, which is now known as the Mac Senior Center. We share that facility. It's now considered an aging and disability resource center, so it's a place for aging and people with disabilities to come together, because so many times, they encounter some of the same challenges. That is located at 909 Progress Circle. GPS finally has found us. We're happy to say that. You can find us on the internet, under construction, at bayareacil.org, and that's C-I-L, bayareacil.org. Or our telephone number is 443-260-0822.
Thank you.
We welcome any call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Tingle, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Next, I'd like to invite Zach Evans from Wycomico County Fair. Come forward.
Thank you to everybody here at the council for squeezing me in on your agenda. I understand that I was supposed to be here last week, but a little scheduling mishap between Laura and I caused some confusion. So I'm here tonight, and I apologize for my appearance as well. I'm fresh back from Winter Place Park. We're getting the fairgrounds ready for this year's first Wycomico County Fair. Just to give everybody, I won't take much of your time, I know you're busy, but just to give everybody a brief history. The county fair, this is, again, the first time Wycomico County will be having this event, and it's the result of a collaboration between the Wycomico Farm and Home Show, which is in its 79th year, and the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce, who owns exclusively the rights to the Del Marva Chicken Festival. So we partnered up early on, in January of this year, and thought that there was a unique opportunity with the Del Marva Chicken Festival no longer going on this year, and Salisbury Festival having been, you know, set aside for this year. There was a unique opportunity to provide the community with an event, and something a little different than maybe what they had experienced in the past. A lot of focus on the urban revitalization right now in the city of Salisbury, which is amazing, and, you know, we wanted to bring that agricultural, educational aspect back. So that's what the fair is. We're really highlighting agriculture in Wycomico County. It's the number-one industry. Wycomico County is the largest agricultural producer on Del Marva, which comes as a shock to a lot of people. They may not think of that, but that's what we do here. So we're going to have all of your typical county fair events. We're going to have your livestock shows, and your grain, and fruits and vegetables exhibitions. We're also going to have competitive entries for different arts and crafts, and forms of photography, and woodworking, and all kinds of exciting stuff there. Going to have your tractor pulls, all those things that you really associate with your county fair. We're also bringing in carnival rides and small amusements. We're having a night's-for-site bike ride in the morning on Saturday, as well as a children's 5K to support Wycomico County Parks and Rec. So we've really collaborated with a lot of different organizations and nonprofits in Wycomico County. So I just wanted to take this time to open it up to any questions. Again, it's for the Wycomico County Fair, the dates are the 14th, 15th, and 16th, so it's Friday through Sunday. I didn't give any of the information, so I apologize. The hours are Friday, 2:00 to 9:00; Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and Sunday, 12:00 to 4:00. You can find out a little bit more about us at our brand-new website, wycomicofair.com. Or I encourage any of you, I'm going to leave a stack of cards on the table to reach out to me directly, if you're interested in learning more about the fair, or participating in any way, shape, or form. But if nothing else, we hope you all bring your families and friends out this weekend and join us. The weather's supposed to be great, and the county has done a great job refinishing the carriage house, and fixing up the facilities, and we've got a great venue to put on the event this weekend. So I thank you.
Zach, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Zach.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
I'm just so very happy that you've expanded this. You know, we've talked about it for years.
Yes, sir. And I'm happy to be a part of that. I brought one of these for everybody, and I'm going to leave some by the door as well. Our farm's your food, so it's kind of indicative of the mission, and sort of the vision that we're trying to bring back with the fair. I'll put mine right there. Yep. So thank you, guys, very much.
There we go. Good stuff. Zach, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is, we have the scholarship presentations for Salisbury-Wycomico Youth and Civics Council.
One of the participants is running a little late, so would it be possible if we could skip to the resolutions and then come back?
If that worked, Mr. Mayor?
Is that okay with you, Mr. Mayor?
That work for you?
Mr. Williams just told the mayor, "Sit down."
I was polite.
That happened?
You know, I was just...
If you could send up a signal, I'll let us know.
I'm actually going to do a bat signal, if possible.
I'll look for it.
Okay, I'll make sure. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, yeah, just let me out. All right. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll give a second if it wasn't...
All right, any discussion or amendments?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, taking off ordinance number 2347.
Okay.
Excuse me?
Yes.
We need to remove 2346 to...
Right.
Oh, sorry about that. 2346 and 2347.
All right, so we have a motion to table 2346 and 2347?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Aye, second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion on the amendment? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the amended legislative agenda, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. All right, now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Ms. Nichols?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the July 6th, 2015 Closed Session Minutes A and B, the July 6th Work Session Minutes, the July 13th Regular Meeting Minutes. We have Resolution Number 2530 to modify the employee handbook to require future department heads to reside in Salisbury unless waived by the council, and Resolution Number 2531, accepting funds awarded through the Maryland Department of Natural Resources Waterway Improvement Fund Grant in the amount of $25,000 for utility pedestals at the Port of Salisbury Marina. And that would be it.
Okay. All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right. Next item on our agenda is the order of bids. Entertain a motion in support of the order of bids?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is Ms. Miller here this evening? No?
There is no...
There is no order of bids. All right, that's all right. I've got a order of bids on my agenda.
Mr. Council President, our last guest is here, if you want to...
Good. Okay. We now have before us the manufacturing exemption application... Oh, we have our previous guest. Okay. All right. We're going to get this right.
It's okay with the...
Mr. Mayor?
It's okay with the...
Mr. Williams, I have yet to see the bat signal.
Well, manufacturers are important.
All right. No, no, let's go ahead and do the Youth Civics Council Scholarship Presentations.
That's right. They will be required to spell a order of bids. Mr. Council President, I just want to say thank you to Deleonius Williams, who works in our office with the Youth Civics Council, to all of you on the city council, to the Community Foundation for funding the Wycomico County High School Spelling Bee this year. And we have our winner and participants here that are going to be getting certificates of recognition, and be given ways to access their scholarship money. Their scholarship money that they will receive can be used for filing expenses that they may have: AP testing, SAT testing, ACT testing, university application fees, college or university tuition and fees, textbooks and book-related expenses. And they'll be accessing that money through us. So again, I just want to thank, A, the Community Foundation for funding it, Mr. Williams for coming up with it, the council for accepting it, and to the winners who we're going to recognize this evening for participating. So first off, this certificate of achievement is presented of out... I'm sorry, it's outstanding achievement. My apologies. Outstanding being spelled O-U-T-S-T-A-N-D-I-N-G here on the sheet, is to Kate Nichols. Kate, if you'll come forward, this is from all of us, Kate in the city. You are being recognized, Kate, for being an exceptional member of the 2015 Salisbury-Wycomico Youth Civics Council, and receiving the accompanying $250 scholarship for participation in the Wycomico County High School Spelling Bee. This certificate is issued to you, in appreciation thereof by the mayor, and on behalf of the citizens of Salisbury and the Salisbury City Council. So congratulations. All right. Let's see. Kate, let's stay up here, because we may have a word for you to try and outspoken Monroe. I'd also like to introduce to everyone Monroe Parker III. Monroe, if you'll come forward. Monroe, you are being recognized this evening with a certificate of outstanding achievement for coming in first place in the 2015 Salisbury-Wycomico High School Spelling Bee, and receiving a $1,000 scholarship award. And this certificate is issued to you in appreciation thereof by myself, the mayor, and the city council, and on behalf of all of the citizens of Salisbury. Monroe, congratulations. Mr. Council President, I'm going to yield the floor to Mr. Williams, who is not to be outdone in this area of spelling, and let him finish up this presentation. Thank you.
I am actually a terrible speller, so please, no one ask me how to spell anything. I just wanted to say that there was one other individual who received an award. Kate received her award because it was actually her idea to have the Wycomico County Spelling Bee, and she was instrumental in making that happen. And the other individual, Steve Lee, who unfortunately had family matters to attend to, he proposed adding crosswalks and other safety measures around Wycomico High School, and did an outstanding, exceptional job in that presentation. And Monroe was actually also part of the youth council, and gave a presentation on public transportation in Wycomico County, and all three of them were exceptional members of the civics council. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you for your work on the Youth Civics Council. Your leadership, great job. Understood. Next item on our agenda is the manufacturing exemption for equipment purchased in 2014 by Purdue Foods LLC. Entertain a motion to approve the manufacturing exemption.
So moved.
Second. All right. I'd like to invite representatives from Purdue. I'd like to invite you to come forward. If you wouldn't mind, feel free to come to the microphone and offer any insight you can into these purchases, and the great work Purdue's doing.
I guess first, I want to say thank you for the invite tonight, and I'll introduce myself. My name is Tony Mesa, well, Anthony, but known as Tony Mesa. I am the Director of Operations for the plant here in Salisbury. I've been with Purdue going on eight years, and it's been a real exciting time, and worked at Georgetown, but I've been really excited by working here at the Salisbury plant. And for most of you who don't know much about our plant, really quick, I'll give you a really quick summary of what we, who we are, and what we do. We are a, we've been built, our plant was constructed in 1937. We employ from live to finish about 625 associates. That's to include associates in the plant, the drivers, live drivers, and management, and support. We have a very simple mix, but a very complicated mix from day-to-day operations. We do a little bit of retail. About 15% of our product goes out as injection, and the rest, of course, is ice pack, and ice pack hubers, and ice pack parts. So we are very aggressive in the community. We participate in about eight or nine annual events in the community, and it's been a real pleasure for me being back the last three years to spend some time at the Salisbury plant. So thank you for the invite, and it's a real pleasure to be here tonight.
Hello, I'm Andrea Williams. I'm the Controller and Senior Vice President of the Purdue Foods LLC. And I also want to thank you for the manufacturing exemption for the Innovation Center. The Salisbury plant is a little more visible here in the community, but this exemption also covers the Innovation Center that we have out in the industrial park. And the center was built in 2004. It employs 45 associates. And the center is where we do all of our exciting new product development, where we create our new products, and we also bring in our customers and consumers, and work with our customers to develop products that they're interested in as well. So we, the exemption is for both facilities, and we thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you both for being here this evening. We appreciate it. That being said, all those in favor of the exemption, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is the manufacturing exemption for Jubal and Cadista. I'll entertain a motion to approve that exemption.
So moved.
Motion, a second. Is anyone representing Jubal and Cadista with us this evening? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of the manufacturing exemption for Jubal and Cadista, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right. We thank both of those organizations for the investment they make in Salisbury.
May I ask?
Yes.
Does Purdue Incorporated have any association with the county fair? And would this be an opportunity to get a taste-testing group out there for your new products?
That's something we'll have to talk to the I-Center folks about, I guess. Good idea. Absolutely. Not this year, sir.
I'm thinking not.
So we have no order of bids this evening. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2532. Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2532. That was moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Mr. Stevenson?
Good evening, Mr. Council President, members of the council. Resolution 2532 is a resolution in the city of Salisbury to approve the Maryland Department of Natural Resources Community Parks and Playground Grant Application for Funding for Phase Two of the Salisbury Skate Park. The Maryland Department of Recreation and Parks has solicited applications from eligible natural resources, I should say, forgive me, applications from eligible jurisdictions to apply for funding under the Community Parks and Playgrounds, or CPMP, program for fiscal year 2017. The city of Salisbury is eligible to apply for CPMP funds from the Department of Natural Resources. The city of Salisbury recognizes the important role that playgrounds, parks, recreational areas play in maintaining a healthy, pleasant, attractive environment for our local residents. The city council wishes to rehabilitate, improve, and expand the parks, playgrounds, and recreational areas within the city in order to improve the quality of life for all citizens. And whereas the Department of Natural Resources has awarded a Community Parks and Playground Grant in the amount of $262,000 to the city of Salisbury for the Salisbury Skate Park Phase One, this resolution, again, 2532, will authorize an application to the Department of Natural Resources for funding in the amount of $397,000 for funding for the Salisbury Skate Park Phase Two. Ms. Sam is with us this evening, if the council has any questions regarding this application or the skate park in general.
I think, Ms. Sam, would you mind coming forward and maybe giving us a little update on the current status of the skate park? I think that'd be helpful to know.
Good evening. I'm happy to report that the skate park contractors have finished the job that they're working on currently, a little early. So they're scheduled to begin construction on Phase One next week, August 18th. So we have a groundbreaking...
Super.
Yes. Eight long years in the making. I could not be more thrilled. So we have a groundbreaking scheduled for Wednesday, the 19th, and I'm working with the mayor's office on a press release to get... and I'm working with the mayor's office on a press release to get that out. So, we're all very excited. Now, if we submit... we're... this application that we're planning to submit is due August 19th, and if funding is awarded in FY '17, this would enable us to roll right into the construction of Phase Two next summer.
What's the estimated timeline for the Phase One construction process?
Based upon the timeline the contractors have submitted, we're probably looking at late November, early December completion.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, hearing none. Anything else to add?
No.
All right. All those in favor of resolution number... what was it, 2352? 2532, excuse me. Please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is ordinance number 2348. This is for second reading. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Mr. Tillman?
Good evening. This is a fairly simple amendment of 15.22.040B, which is basically changing the date from January 1st of each year to June 1st of each year. The additional changes that you see there with regard to, you know, capitalization or just corrections that'll go in the code to reflect the desire of the council to capitalize the names of the various departments. And this is the... to amend the billing date for the registration of vacant buildings from January of each year until June of each year.
Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2349. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
This is also for second reading, by the way. Mr. Tillman?
This is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury amending 1.16.100C to increase the amount of fines contained in the code. And whereas the current 1.16.100C outlines the penalties for violating certain codes, this amendment will increase the amount from $500... excuse me, from the violations of the following codes and ordinances are declared to be an infraction, and the penalty for such violation shall not exceed $500 for each initial offense and shall not exceed $1,000 for each repeat offense. And that 500 is taking away what used to be 250, and the 1,000 is increasing that from the previous 500. And then the codes that this applies to are the International Building Code 2015, International Residential Code of 2015, International Energy Conservation Code of 2015, International Mechanical Code, the International Plumbing Code, International Fuel Gas Code, and International Existing Building Code, all of 2015.
And although we've talked about this at work session in first reading, two things I'd point out. One, the requests coming from the administration also is to bring us in line with state maximums, which are already a thousand, not 500. And two, that this doesn't specifically raise any particular fine. This raises the ceiling.
Yes. And the amounts that we have here not only match state code, but also are in compliance with our charter.
All right. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2350, also for second reading. Entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2350.
So moved.
Aye.
Second.
All right. Thank you, Jay. Mr. Tillman?
All right. This... second reading of this ordinance, as I explained last time, we originally had these consolidated into one ordinance. We separated them because they dealt with two separate sections of the code. The first ordinance, the primary change is that there were complaints about the hours where you would not be committing a noise ordinance violation if you were to be operating and doing construction during those hours. And that was changed from the prior time period. So, it now will read that construction, the erection, including excavation, demolition, alteration, or repair of any building other than between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. on Monday through Friday, between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. on Saturday, and between the hours of 12:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m. on Sunday. So that construction at times other than that would be presumed to be a noise violation. And then also, the provision also allows there to be exceptions if the Department of Building, Permitting, and Inspections, which we're gonna capitalize, by the way. I noticed in this last version it's not, but we'll make sure that it is. And you don't need to do that as an amendment because that would just be a technical change. So, unless you have one of those special exceptions granted, then you would not be allowed to do... engage in those activities outside of those hours without being presumed to be in violation of the noise ordinance.
Mr. Tillman? One of the things that count during council's discussion, that conclusion that we came to several times, was that the presumption that an activity is a violation of the noise ordinance was not something we wanted.
No. What this says is that...
Unless I misunderstood what you said to open this conversation.
What this is basically saying is that the erection, demolition, or whatever, other than between these hours, and so the... in other words, if... and these hours that were chosen were hours that were considered late enough or decent enough so that you really shouldn't be engaging in construction activities outside of those hours. And that's my understanding of what we did want, but...
But we... what we agreed to was that after those hours, outside of those hours, construction activities should be allowed so long as they don't violate the decibel.
Correct. And that's where the other ordinance... that's why we separated that and put that in the other.
So, the presumption of a violation is the presumption of a violation of this portion of the ordinance? That would then, you know, that would then be measured by the ordinance we're going to discuss after that?
Well, I mean, this ordinance would... it would be... these two ordinances operate together.
Right.
And the way this would work is that we obviously don't want people out on weekdays prior to, you know, 9:00 a.m. or after 6... excuse me. On weekdays, it's between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. So, we don't... you presumably don't want people engaging in construction before 7:00 a.m. That's the way this ordinance reads. But you also... it's a complaint-driven ordinance, so in other words, if someone were painting or drywalling, clearly there would not be a noise violation. I mean, you have to be creating a noise that's sufficient to disturb members of the community.
So, in that case, should a complaint be... and I know we'll talk about this in the next order, but in that case, in that instance, should a complaint arise because there is activity, whether or not it generates any noise, that would prompt the enforcement arm to measure the noise level and determine that it was not an unreasonable noise and thus not a violation of the noise ordinance, correct?
Right. You still have the discretion of the enforcement officer. The... this... what they're saying here is if you're doing it between the allowed hours, it's gonna be presumed not to be by the enforcement officer. If the officer gets there and there's really no noise being made that he can detect, he's not gonna issue a violation.
Okay.
You're not compelling people to issue violations.
Okay.
You're just simply saying that if you stay within these hours, you're gonna be presumed good in front of the judge.
Understood. Thank you. Other questions or comments or concerns? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance number 2350, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item on our agenda is the second part of this, ordinance number 2351 for second reading. Entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2351.
So moved.
For second?
Second.
We have a motion of second. Mr. Tillman?
All right. This particular ordinance basically adopts the state standards for noise levels. It's already been adopted in the Salisbury code. We're just clarifying it. We're talking about how it's gonna be measured, what equipment's gonna be used to measure it. And... but the actual sound levels that you see in those charts are actually state standards. And there are... you can actually apply for exemptions from these through... if you follow state rules set forth in COMAR. But this is supposed to be the really loud noise that the state has said. Anything beyond this is noise pollution by state law, and we've simply adopted that within the city of Salisbury.
Okay.
Which we're authorized to do by the state law. They've authorized all the municipalities to do this.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments on this? Mr. Stevenson?
Yes, sir.
I guess one question I have is the sound level meters...
Yes.
...that Chief Duncan presented to us at a previous meeting. Are we in the process of acquiring or planning the acquisition of those sound level meters?
I think we have two right now, and the chief's looking into purchasing more, yes.
More, okay.
Is there a certification process?
To operate the equipment? Not that I'm aware of, no. Just needs to be calibrated.
Okay, so there'll be no discussion in court whether or not the person is qualified to run the equipment?
Honestly, that's something I would need to look into. Surely someone might raise that question, but I don't believe there is a requirement to be certified.
I think if we just...
We'll make sure.
Check that out, make sure.
All right. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance number 2351, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mr. Spees, did you vote? I didn't hear you. Mr. Spees?
I'm sorry.
Did you vote?
Yes, I did.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yes, we...
Sorry, I didn't hear.
We were on top of one another.
That's all right? I just missed it. All right. The final item on our agenda today is ordinance number 2352 for first reading. This is the amendment of chapter 6.04, known as the Urban or Backyard Chickens Ordinance. Entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 2352.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion of second. Mr. Tillman?
All right. This is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to amend chapter 6.04, dogs, fowl, and other animals of the Salisbury City Code, and to add definitions related to urban chickens and enacting chapter 6.05 to authorize the keeping of chickens subject to certain regulations. Whereas the city of Salisbury recognizes the benefits of locally-produced food, and whereas the city of Salisbury currently prohibits keeping chickens in the corporate limits of the city of Salisbury, and whereas the city of Salisbury deems it to be in the best interest of the city of Salisbury to allow residents to keep a limited number of chickens for providing eggs for residents' personal consumption, and whereas the city council of Salisbury, Maryland desires to modify chapter 6.04 Salisbury City Code and enact 6.05 Salisbury City Code to add definitions related to urban chickens and authorize the keeping of chickens subject to certain regulations as set forth below, and finds such action reasonably furthers the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Salisbury. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Salisbury, that chapter 6.04 be modified and that other additional... and that an additional chapter 6.05 be added as follows. And 6.04, basically, there... what all that's really doing is allowing you to have chickens and then also making reference, I think, to the ordinance involving bees that was previously passed, which is the 606. And then the details with regard to the regulation of the urban chickens are set forth under chapters 6.05 with all the additions that are being made there. I don't know if you'd like me to go through all that. If not, I can just... basically, it sets forth the requirements for having chickens in the city of Salisbury and indicates, you know, what the limits are as far as various things with odor, noise, what requirements are required with regard to lighting, and then also sets forth violations and penalties for those who don't comply. And this is an area that's also regulated by the state as well, so...
Okay. I think one of the changes that was discussed at the last work session was from line 185 to 187 regarding detection of avian influenza virus. And I think we wanted to broaden the language there. I think there was a request to broaden the language there. It says, "Detection of avian influenza virus, HPAI." It says, "As known as..." I think that means "also known as." "Avian flu or bird flu may result in immediate culling of the flock. Removal of the flock shall be determined by the Maryland Department of Agriculture." I think we want to leave room for if there are other infectious diseases that are... that may require the culling of a flock.
Do you want to just make reference to a general disease, any disease?
Well, no, but I mean, detection of, you know, avian influenza virus or other, you know, known, you know, contagious infectious diseases, something like that.
These determinations would fall under the Maryland Department of Agriculture, and they could call the flock independent of whatever the city says.
So, I mean, so in that case, I mean, we could certainly remove it, but given that we're adopting a local component that references the removal of chickens, I think, you know, we might want to provide for something, as we discussed last time, something in addition to... or something more general than just avian influenza.
So, would you want to make reference to state law there? Any disease which the state of Maryland would compel the culling of the flock?
I'd be fine with that. Or something like that.
I mean, this is first reading, so it's easy.
Something like that at our next...
Okay. Because I clearly don't have the expertise to know which diseases, so...
Nor do I.
But if we follow COMAR or state law for that guidance, then that's fine with me. I can look up those references.
I think we can provide something for you, if you can find it, definitely.
Are there other thoughts or comments at this time? All right, so this is for first reading. I'll entertain a... excuse me. I'll call a question. All those in favor of ordinance 2352 for first reading, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I would just like to make the comment for those folks who are interested in having backyard chickens, these are some rather, I wouldn't say strict, but they're encompassing guidelines that protect your flock as well as your neighbors' interests. So, please make yourselves familiar with them, and be sure to follow them, or you run the risk of losing your chickens, making your neighbors unhappy, and making your chickens sick. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Having no requests for public comment, we will... if there's nothing for the good of the order, we'll adjourn. Thank you all. Have a lovely evening.